Are we ready? Good afternoon, everybody. Could we call this meeting to order? Are you ready, clerk? Allison, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Jamie, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure, yes. It's great time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer?
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Here.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Present.
Chairman Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
Commissioner Elguire?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
All present.
We have an agenda in front of us, and I don't assume there are any late additions or deletions. Somebody make a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented. Support?
All those in support of that motion say aye.
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 Opposed? We have an agenda. Do we have any public comment today? We don't have Commissioner comment on the agenda, but you're part of the public as well. Any Commissioner comment? The purpose of our meeting is the review of some updated personnel policy and other board policies. Darcy and Deb and others have been working hard at this. This is a committee meeting. We will be making no final decisions today, of course. We may make some recommendations, as we do in executive committee. I'd like to suggest that reviewing policies is a slow deliberative process, and we probably aren't going to get through everything today, and we ought to be thoughtful about it. But we're going to at least get started. I would like to see if we could agree on a 4:00 P.M. If we don't set a target date, we will just keep going. And if we're all in agreement, I'd like to suggest that we aim for 4:00. Sorry, Doug, it won't be before then.
I suggested 3:00.
Is that everybody in agreement with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. So we will turn it over to Deb and Darcy.
I'm actually going to join Darcy at the table. Do you guys need me to turn the microphones on for your recording, or are we?
They are, they are on.
Everything's on. I don't see the light on. Just wanted to make sure.
So, over the last seven months, since I started, we hear every month at the meetings about the transition that happened May 21st. And so, when I was hired in December, one of the things that I was hired to do was to oversee finance and HR. And there had not been a plan, really, for either one of those, that transition. And I think we all realize this, perhaps I'm stating the obvious. But I think that that leads us to where we are today, and these policies, and why they're being brought before you. Some of them are the same policies we've had before with very minor changes. Other ones are new policies that are recommended by legal counsel. So, there are a variety of different components to these policies. Some are based on past experience that I have as an HR manager. Some are based on training officer, some are just based on best practice and what legal counsel has recommended for us. I've heard it said that these are niceties but not necessities. I would beg to differ. Legal counsel has reviewed this entire document, and what's being brought before you are suggestions, or recommendations, I should say more importantly than suggestions. So, with that said, I do just want to mention that these are also meant to be preventative, not punitive, in nature. So, I look at everything through the lens of risk management. How are we mitigating the risk to the county through these policies and procedures? So again, I would ask you all to keep an open mind as we go through this as well. Some things will perhaps be uncomfortable, but I think that there will definitely be some clarity that's provided. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through, we're low-hanging fruit first. We're going to go through the current policies that we have, bring those before you so you can take a look at those, approve some minor changes to those, then look at some policies that have been recommended by legal counsel. And then we'll take a little bit more of a deeper dive, hopefully a quick deeper dive, to the recommended policy manual. And the justification for the policy manual, which we have not had in this capacity before, is to allow for a document that employees are, I don't want to say required to sign, they are required to sign, but it doesn't mean that they are accepting the policies, they are acknowledging the policies. So, that's the process for this. And some of them have to do with cybersecurity issues that we all know are major concerns. Some of them have to do with code of conduct and how we operate here as the county. So, there are a wide variety of items that we're going to go through today. So, I don't want to labor that process anymore, but we'll get started with the current policies. And I'm going to turn it over to Darcy to kind of lead you through that first step. You should all have the agenda. It may be a little bit of a different structure in terms of following, but everything, did you hand these out?
I did hand out before the meeting.
Okay. So you have a sheet that says policies, and for each one that we're going to be reviewing, it has the page number, so where you'll find these documents. So, Darcy, I'll let you do it.
Wow, I can say this has been a heck of a process for me even. I have learned so much working through policies since it was first recommended that we come up with something from legal counsel back in January to where we are today. There's been some highs, there's been some lows, but I think what I brought to you today is something that represents a quality document that's been reviewed by legal that not only helps mitigate the risk for the county, but it also gives the employees a reference of where they can go to find out information about what's expected of them, what code of conduct is, hey, if I have a read, what is available? If they're lifeline to what they're expected and what they can do here at the county.
And if I could interject for a second, I do want to take a moment to thank Michelle, because she sat with Darcy and I and reviewed these documents and also gave some very valuable feedback, acknowledging the fact that she has done this job for many, many years. And no discredit to her, from the standpoint that some of these policies that we're recommending today are new. Some are based on new laws, new requirements. So, there's a blend, I think, of past practice and new requirements. So, I just wanted to take a minute to say that.
And if you're okay with it, I would like to start with a couple of those really easy, as Deb referred to, low-hanging fruit. If you look at 2.03, which is actually on page 35, that is the equal employment opportunity policy. That's a policy that has existed here in accounting, but since it was last approved, there's been a change in law on protected class.
Okay, before you go any further, let us find page which?
It's page 35.
Okay, did we go over?
We have all these in individual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can start at the first if you want. At the bottom of it, they don't have 35 at the bottom?
Yeah, we do.
Mine does.
In which document, though?
It should be personnel?
It's in the e-packet.
They're all individual PDFs. Which PDF is our?
It's 2.03, 2.03 policy, 2.03.
Oh, this one, okay.
Okay, so if I'm using the, which are we supposed to be doing this?
There's.
Do you have more hard copies? That would probably be easier.
I was on page 35. Okay, 35, that's what she's doing. We got it last night.
Hang on, you did receive hard packets, last night, you received hard packets? And this might be helpful if everyone's working on this. Does everybody have their hard packet now? So, okay. So, on page 35 of your document.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, I thought so, but I didn't see it. You know, we got those last night, got home at 10:00.
I understand.
You know, mine's sitting on my counter.
Would it be valuable to take just a short break and get those without hard copies to do?
It's this one, right? I have this, but it's a bunch of documents.
Yeah, the e-packet has the whole thing that you're working out of right now. It's all in one, if you download it.
Mine went to 27.
And I have it.
That was. Okay, wait a minute, here's an extra one, too. At the bottom, it's 27.
I'm surprised this group didn't go home at 10:30 last night and sort through all your papers.
I did.
Better than that's the time today.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
All right, so everybody has the documents now, thank you. So, as I was saying, the equal opportunity policy has just been updated to include the protected classes that have been added by the federal standards. And it also includes the ADA requirement, the American with disability requirements. These are legal updates that have to be updated. What is the, I'm trying to find it again.
What is the physical examinations will be required only after conditional job offer is made?
That's, we can't require someone to do a physical.
Can or cannot?
Cannot.
So why is that?
If we're not going to offer them a job, we can't require them.
If we offer them a job?
Back there.
If we offer them.
We have some insight.
But that's union, you're union, right, Jim?
We have to, the licenses. Even licenses, officer in the state of office.
Do we have, do you have anybody over here that's non-union that you require that of? Okay, this is non-union, right? Absolutely. Okay, I thought this one was just non-union. This is for all employees? Gotcha, okay.
So, all employees have to have a physical?
No, if we require a physical, we'll only require it after.
And it's only the sheriff's department or private people that does it, correct?
Yeah, at this point, yes. I mean, it's in there, in case we, let's say we decided for maintenance that we do want people to have a physical, because they have, you know, a variety of different tasks, you know, they work out at the parks, they work independently.
No, it's okay. You guys can stay on the topic, but I have been, but I'd like to make just about, about this meeting in general. Because I think we, we did talk about, didn't we bring some employees, like, actually in here to take part in this process? And I don't see anyone.
Well, it's posted, I mean, we can't mandate people come.
Posted, where?
It's posted, you know, publicly for people to be able to come. So, is there something in particular that you would?
No, I just, I would like, I mean, in my mind, this was going to be a collaboration between employees and the commission and leadership.
It has been referred to the department head and asked to be shared with their staff. So, we have asked for feedback. I don't believe that Darcy received very much feedback, if any. So, all we can do is understand that staff was given the opportunity to provide input. So, we're moving forward with this document, because we have to at some point.
No, I'm just, yes, I'm just curious, because I feel like.
Well, and before we take final official action, that will be at a meeting, and if there's other staff input received, we can make sure we hear that. I'd like to suggest that I don't, this is very, we can handle it very informally, and just reach out if nobody's talking, ask questions.
Just a clarification on the physical thing. I mean, in my own capacity, there are tasks that require certain things, and I think that's why the language is in there. Someone has to lift a 50-pound ax, be able to hold it, those things. And if that job task require it, then you're legally obligated, actually, protect the county, to make sure you don't put someone there. So that's, I think, why that text is there. They probably don't have that job description right now, but this covers that future possibility.
Well, that also, that line protects you, because you don't want someone to say, well, you didn't hire me because, you didn't offer me the job because I don't have a physical.
Right.
You want to prevent any accusation of discrimination before it happens.
Is there anything in here that we didn't hear from the attorney we needed to have in this particular policy? Anything that sets it apart as above and beyond?
Now, the additional language actually came from corporate counsel. And what is crossed out, I'm correct, was our old hash language. So what we have read underlined is what is recommended by legal counsel.
For these, that we have very little discussion, I think we should highlight, and then move on to the next, and we'll reach agreement on which ones we come back for approval and which need more work. So let's, let's keep talking about this till we're all satisfied.
Okay. I have a question. On the final statement, they said all individuals who feel they have been subjected to prohibited discrimination may file a complaint with the human resource director or the county administrator. So that goes for elected officials, co-employees?
I believe we have stated previously that these policies do not relate to elected officials.
Applies to, okay, I just read, okay, it applies to all Leesland County employees and elected officials.
Well.
There's a previous statement that somewhere earlier up, if you read the first part that says this, you have to go to the top.
Right.
But I guess from that perspective, is that, you know, for some of these, we have to understand that we have no jurisdiction.
Okay. So, and he's aware of that, I guess.
Michelle?
Can I ask you, here, I don't want to interrupt a presentation, but I do want to bounce off of what Commissioner Kramer said, because you did ask for staff number two, because you got nervous to be here today. I went over these with them, and I can provide it. I think that there are a lot of questions, like both sides, if I were a commissioner, what would I want to see? Obviously, whether we're elected or not elected, we still have to deal with the equal employment opportunity.
Absolutely. I have no problem with that. I was just wondering about, Michelle?
I just, can I just slide around here so I can speak into the microphone?
Yeah, that would be great.
These are your policies. The board can issue controls on policies, we do not control the policies. And it's not up to me to approve it or not, but because you did ask for input and it's something that I've argued and to do, and the trailer, Darcy, and some things, they offer both some things, they do, which is their right to do. The last line I hear, because a lot of my questions were, is a legally required visitor opinion to different things. Attorneys can give us opinions all day long, but if they are your policies, of course, how can you see equal opportunity, like Darcy said, it's pretty straightforward in itself? Physicals are, I've never known anyone helping law enforcement to give physicals. If it's in here, probably no con, no file. But any individual who feels they've been subjected to prohibited discrimination may file a complaint with the human resources director or the county administrator. It stops one sentence short. What if that's where the problem is? Who do they go to?
That's where I was going.
And that's a common theme, I said, it's not my duty to tell you to be bad, it's not theirs, it's up to you. I just bring that to you as an elected official, because that is always a possibility.
You need checks and balance.
Where do they go with complaints against you? I guess then they handle to the.
Go to EEOC.
They can go to EEOC, or they can go to my judges. But I agree, it's a valid complaint, you can't always take your complaints to the administrator and the HR director.
Right.
So where have people gone in the past? I'm sorry, it was your turn.
No, it's okay. I was going to bring it, there have been instances in the past, and that's, you know, that's.
Current leaders, well, it hasn't been, also, I don't want mixed things, but that's just my comment on that. I think we just need to be aware of that. I'm not sure that the law can always stop it, but that's just my opinion as an elected official. And they have to have a place to go to, because sometimes it's a simple fact, and that needs stopping point.
Why don't I do this, why don't I bring this back to legal counsel, ask them for a recommendation on the next step? I don't know if that appropriate step would be the chairman of the board, or what the next step would be. So, in light of that, this could be one of those areas that we can bring back to you in terms of a little more information.
Well, I guess, we're, if, if an elected official has one employee that has a complaint, that's not necessarily, say, let's use, Joe Hubble's not here, so let's use Joe Hubble as an example. If he has two employees, and one of them feels discriminated upon in any way, not from Joe, should they take it to him first, as the elected official of that department? See if that's something Joe can handle or take care of, or Joe would refer on, before it goes outside the elected official's office? If it's the elected official, that's different. I can see it going to the human resources director, or the county administrator, or the chairing board, to move on. But, you know, and it could be, what if, yeah, what if one of Joe's employees feels like, you know, the county administrators, then can they take it to their boss? So that is just, because it's such a balancing act with the elected officials being co-employers.
I think that would be an easy, easy update to satisfy what you're looking for.
Where did people go in the past? Where was it recommended in the past? I thought it was the chairman, for some reason. No?
All over, all over the board, honestly, even the press sometimes, unfortunately. But yeah, chairman of the board, commissioners, you know, we didn't have HR, so it was administrator, unless it was administrator, then it was their direct department head, so Jim has a comment in that.
But I like that, if it's not the elected official, and they work for an elected official, the first step is the elected official.
Right.
And then the administrator, and then the board.
So they're kept in the loop.
And certainly, I think that could be HR's process, is the first question we would ask is, have you spoke to your supervisor?
That's where I was involved, we didn't take that. We're multi-level. Goal here is to get it reported. It shouldn't be immediate supervisor, before it's even a department head.
Right.
It needs to be reported, doesn't matter where it starts, if it has to go, it shouldn't go, we've all had it in the past, we have over 100 policies just in the sheriff's office that are outside of these, and the goal is to get the child reported. It's like, that's sort of like, possibility to pick up the chain, or where it's got to go. Ultimately ends, you know, if it's oral, obviously, that is, that's what you do. If that's what you're doing, it shouldn't be immediate supervisor, where the new department head all the way up. It's multiple.
So, got enough on that one, and you'll send that to attorneys? Are we ready to move on with the understanding that they'll? Yes.
I have a question for undersheriff Kiesler. Are you required to sit way back there? We could hear you better if you would. That's where they tend to sit, is in the back. Quickly to say. Those are your special seats, I know, but we could hear you better. Strategic. We'd love, we'd love to hear you and see you better.
I do, I do want to just mention something real quick. I have to apologize, I did not, and I also have an eyelash, so give him grief. I did not realize that, that there was a request from the commissioners for individuals or staff to attend this meeting. So, I had one particular employee who asked me about attending today, and because I was coming from a context of keeping HR and keeping finance separate, I said it was not necessary for them to come. But if the board had put a request out for someone to come to this meeting, and I was not aware, I apologize for that. So I'm kind of addressing Commissioner Kramer specifically, because I don't, I want you to understand, I was not aware that that, that there was that request that was out there was not in my head when we were preparing this. So, I'm just mindful, but I want to make sure that that individual, if they feel that they need to be here, is given that opportunity.
Why don't you call them? Yeah.
Thank you. I was under the impression that it was from a finance perspective, so I apologize.
Are we ready to go to the next policy? This one, we are in check with attorney on. Do you follow?
I'd like to go to 3.03 next, which is the information technology resources policy. This one only has two changes to it. It is an existing policy that was last updated in 2013.
And where is it?
The next one. Although there may be more changes coming as we get deeper into the whole cybersecurity issues, we do have two recommended changes. The first one is on, it's page four of the policy, but it's page 40 of your packet. And that is the requirement that USB flash drives will be prohibited and blocked unless authorized by the IT department, and that authorized USB drives must be encrypted.
Commissance.
Commissance.
Totally.
And the other changes on page, the next page, page five, training, cybersecurity training assigned by the IT department will be mandatory, and if it's not completed, it allows the IT department to restrict use of county technology until that training's completed.
And I think that's consistent with what we've been operating on for quite some time.
I miss our old quizzes. I miss all of our old quizzes. We're probably due for one, too.
How is this done now? Are they allowed, are employees allowed to do the training on county time, or do they have to do it on their own time? They can do it county time?
And they don't take that much time, but I know from the last.
They do if you're interrupted. That's why I asked.
Well, the last one that went through, there was probably 20 employees who didn't complete it, which leaves us at risk.
And we've all heard at our audit, this will is through MMRMA, in terms of, so both government and, MMRMA have set up independent cybersecurity training and are highly recommending that all entities now offer more, more in-depth cybersecurity requirements and training. So that's where some of this is coming from as well.
So, so to follow up on that, there are risks if they don't do it, but is there a policy on, on how that is done, then? How, how is that done? So, let's pick on somebody else, you know, let's say Johnson, well, take an elected official's employee that doesn't do it, and then take a department head, you got one of Trudy's employees, hasn't done it. What's the process?
Basically, their probably email will be shut down, their access will be shut down.
Immediately?
I mean, I think that's some of the clarification that, that needs to be done, but we need to be able to have some recourse in this, that we have employees, and we have 20 on average each month that aren't doing it, the liability to the organization is pretty significant. I would imagine that there's going to be reminders. You're going to get a reminder, we can set that up in the policy. We can put on to Leanna about that process.
I think he's going where I go.
Leanna put on the list. I think it went to the department.
I approve sending that out.
Leanna put on the list, who didn't complete, who went to the department. I got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I had the misfortune of having, I think, six employees who hadn't completed.
Yeah.
That one, and I reached out to those six, and said, listen, you got until this date to get it done, or basically, you won't get assigned anything, not come to work.
Which is exactly where I was going. So what happens if you, so you have a deputy that they use, they use iPads or computers in their cars when they're.
No, but I mean, anything they do in the office, you have to sign in and she can ease her up something and they're no longer able to sign in and do anything.
So you have a plan for how you will discipline that employee if they don't?
You do in the sheriff's office, yes.
And what is that?
Well, it says it right here, if you fail to relate to training, you, for the IT privileges be suspended. That's pretty straightforward.
Well, it isn't, I just was wondering with that, like, what is that disciplinary action? Will you put that?
It can't work.
So you got to put them on suspension or suspend them?
That's what it says.
Suspension or termination.
Right.
Okay.
So do you have like a first warning and a second warning?
I just ask Darcy to write down a three-step process. So that first one is perhaps a, you know, a warning from the IT department that your training is in arrears, you know, by 10 days or five days. You know, if we set up, saying if you got to do it by the end of the month, whatever that is, give them a warning that you've not completed.
It seems like with this, it has to be more than a month, closer than a month. This is pretty.
Because not every employee, I would imagine, is sitting in front of their desk all day, every day. So it's not like necessarily maybe part of their workflow. Is that correct or incorrect?
Leanna usually gives people several weeks to.
Okay.
She says a deadline, I'll see if you can.
Okay.
Just kind of making us listen and, I mean, whatever you do here, you don't have to have it down to the 10th eye. What happens if you do it on a Tuesday and they don't say yes?
No.
You have to allow some discretion to your administration to be fair in their administration of this. So I agree with having a lot of stuff, but we, we can fly speck this down to a ridiculous level and, and if, if, if we, if this policy's pretty clear and if we have someone that's treated unfairly by these people, we're going to hear about it. Like, I've, I've come to realize right away, people aren't bashful to let us know when it didn't go the way it is. So I agree with some of this, but like, we can't drill this right down. We hired people to, to do that.
No, I just want, I just wanted to know what we're going to do because, say, we do have one with two elect, basically two elected officials here. It's election season, Michelle has two employees that haven't done it. Can you, will you terminate or suspend your employees? You want, you will not?
I remember this, we just talked about, I didn't do my training. There was a judge, I wrote a document, the judge's access is where you can have access to this law and that. Our access to the system is not just going to be terminated because we didn't do the three-man class. I sat down and did them right away. I appreciate the reminder. I had no problem being ashamed, I mean, we know that we haven't taken the class. I sat down and did it, I printed out my certificate, but sometimes it doesn't want to give me that. Yeah, you got it right, some people, I got this now. Does it prevent from us being hacked? No. The worst thing for the higher-up management, as a rule, from what I've been told, are the ones that tend to get the sticky fingers the most and accidentally click on the phishing emails. I mean, some of them are pretty obvious. Trying to look at your emails if you're suspicious at home on your personal phone is the surest way to get you a negative argument, yeah, it's real, it's the hardest.
Sure.
We just got notice that we have a new one, it's been there for 20 minutes, I think it is. I got notice on it today, it came up, it's a 20-minute class.
It's probably a reminder.
Yeah, because I got it two weeks ago and I had it.
So we're not getting those anymore?
Um, I'll have to ask Leanna what the process is there for the board.
I don't think we've gotten since.
I, I took one last week. I, I wanted to say that I think we have a lot of good supervisors and department heads and, and I think this can be managed by just say, this is what we do.
I agree.
And I think too much detail on it is.
It does say may result, so might be enough.
There's always got to be a little bit of discretion, that's, because every circumstance is different and we couldn't sit here and file through every single one of them, so.
Is my computer on the server? It's not, is it? My laptop?
Your email is.
Your email is.
Your email, you're through the server.
Okay. That wasn't made super clear to me when I picked this up.
You're a portal, there's no, there's, there's no Prince of Nairobi who wants to give us $20 million.
Darn it. I think it's a very real concern that not everything comes to us systematically. Congratulations, you passed the, the quiz or the test when it comes to a bad email. We have been subject to a lot that when we hit the fish button, it says, thank you for reporting, which means that it was a legitimate phishing attempt. We have to feel better and more aware of what to do. And they accidentally click on that and then they get watched in something. It wasn't that long ago that what prompted us to engage in services of safety notes because we had a real serious issue.
And just to follow up, this crucial because your defense is look for outside attacks. And once you click on that email, you're an inside attack. And you're not as suspicious looking, you've, you've let them into the back door and, and, and your, all of your defenses are, are not as effective against that, so it's real.
Yeah, I get probably at least 10.
Yep.
I get several that request updated bank account information.
Yeah.
And I know that they're not legitimate. And some of them have come from members of the board.
Oh, wow, that's fun.
And I really did want you to buy me some gift cards.
I changed my banking.
Yeah. Yeah. On my work computer, it will tell me if this email has originated outside of the company. So that, that's a real handy right away. It makes you automatically more suspicious.
So what's that?
That can be.
Administrator sent on last week, actually has a great email. So it may not know.
They can spoof that.
Was there a, usually they've unhyphenated instead of a period or?
It's perfect.
Yeah, that's probably not, I, I'm just thinking, you know, back to Homeland Security, you were assigned a regular training record log. And it's important to have that log and even for past, you know, litigation, make sure that that person may have had that class six months before. Every person should have a training log.
Okay. MMRMA is making it more of a requirement from our risk management perspective.
Are we ready to move on to the next one? We'll at some point see this again to finally approve it.
There were just some minor updates in terms of work to either accounting department or.
Erin, next one.
I'm sorry.
5.01, which is the.
This is the one that has just.
Very, a few minor changes, updating like Devon's name first.
What page?
43.
There's nothing read there.
Are you talking about 45?
To go to page 45, update room for county clerk to accounting department to submit requests for travel advances. On page 45, addressing getting requests for expense vouchers submitted in a timely manner.
Yes, some of this has to do with the travel requests from the board members, for staff members, so that they're submitted, I think, within the quarter that they can approve.
This, I think, some of you remember, we had one of those issues earlier this year.
So, which is, which is good because they, they hadn't ever seen that in writing to, you know, to do that. And apparently nobody explained it to them, so that we took care of. What about our vendors? Does this go to our vendors?
No. No, vendors, we, we owe them, we owe them. I don't think there's a statute that says after a certain amount of time you don't have to go vendor.
No.
Even if they don't invoice you, this is strictly travel.
Okay.
I just have a question on that requirement. So if you're traveling March 28th through April 3rd.
You would want to turn it in in the month of April.
Okay. And if you traveled on March 30th, you have a, there's like no grace, there's zero grace period in ears. So you have, you have.
Till June, actually, right?
Well, the way this says by the, filed by the end of the quarter. So it doesn't give, like someone 10 days to actually fill it out and then give it to you after the end of the quarter.
Why don't you, but should be filed instead of must.
Well, I don't, but, but, or must be filed within 10 days of the quarter end or something or.
And there is another policy that I did make the recommendation that was reached within 30 days of the end of the quarter. Would that satisfy you?
Or shorter. I mean, I just, it's just the 10, I, I don't care, like some, like a couple of days. I mean, like if it happens right on that day, it's like, I, I, I got my receipt in the hotel at 4 o'clock on March.
They need them before the executive session.
Right.
They're not going to reject this, so it's, you know, March 30th, you need to, some type of April. It's going to pay, it's just, you've got to have some books.
Right.
One point 12 months working during the end of the year.
Right, right.
So that's why I thought when we wrote that policy, we wrote it quarterly and not calendar year quarter.
A lot of the things were hidden here, only rest of the change is going to be there, but it's not an idea to do a catch and all, it's just.
Okay.
I can certainly add must be filed within 10 days or by the end of each quarter.
Satisfied, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on that?
I think there were several updates. A couple of other changes in that policy. On the next page, page 46, I did not make any recommendations for changing lodging, but I did recommend meals be updated to $59 a day, which is the standard rate for the state of Michigan according to the U.S. General Services Administration.
Does 120 still work for lodging?
120, it fluctuates so much because if you're in Traverse City compared to Mount Pleasant, compared to Lansing.
Washington DC.
They are so different.
Yeah, so what do you do if you're going to Washington DC and you can't get a $120 room?
Well, here's the scenario. If, if you are pre-arranging for a conference, that's not necessarily the issue for this. This is if you are paying on your personal for, and you've not gone through the organization and you're putting it on your own credit card and then you want reimbursement for it, this is what the reimbursement rates are.
Well, if you're updating meals, it seems like you should update lodging a little bit too, because it's probably been that for a long, long time.
If, if that's the case, depend on where you go. We've got, most places are $98 and other places are.
So the U.S. General Service Administration has different rates for where you're at. And it's, it's national. So I guess we would have to look at, anywhere in Michigan, what is the highest? I mean, I'm not trying to.
No, just an average. We don't want, we don't want to go to the most expensive place, but I don't want to go to Red Roof.
Well, I guess the majority of places in Detroit are probably going to be the highest.
Wouldn't it just be easier to say lodging in accordance with the U.S. PSA's standard rates?
It changes every October. I'm sorry.
Why can't we change it every October then? Well, we change mileage reimbursement, don't we, every year?
yearly, but this is, this is the time you book it.
Why can't you?
The time you travel. This does, as a rule, doesn't impact most people because they're going through the proper procedure through conferences. So if it is a conference that you're going to, I use myself, it's 167 a night where I'm going to. It exceeds to 120, but the 167 will be paid because that's where the conference is at.
Just reimbursement, we, we travel around more than anybody. This has never been an issue in my 25th year of.
I know, but if you're stuck having to arrange your own hotel for some reason, this says you won't get any more than 120 a night.
Also, we promise, whatever reason, they get to the hotel and it's messed up. They did put the hotel on their card, it's not capped at the 120 because it was pre-arranged for ready for whatever the rate was. It's never been an issue, at least from the sheriff's office, in my 25th.
Could we just, could the language be just that it is whatever, Michelle?
You are the GAA.
Yeah, the, the, the up-to-date, yeah, rate for, because it does change geographically by year, all of those things. So if you just state that it is that.
So just be aware when you do that. And I'm just looking at the last report that we had in front of us. So October 22.
I mean, is it more difficult that way?
Detroit or Ann Arbor, 118, other January 23, 118. In the summer, it just jumps to 134, but you go to East Lansing, you're 106. So you've got to be careful if you're going to go to Mackinac Island in July, August, it's 18, but if you go in September, it's 114. This is for people, it's not applied in the way you're thinking. So you're going to be jumping all over. If you've got a conference in Michigan, you'll do it at your own, it's 98.
I'm just, I'm just anticipating, if for some reason you end up having to make your own hotel, you, you could get hurt. And I know it almost never happens, but why put something in to gig somebody if that does?
We could say, will be provided.
Well, you're only talking in-state anyways. Is it in-state, Tori Head or?
That's right. I think we can use this as a guide. The guideline will be the 20, the, I believe we want to put a date. Just put U.S. General Service Administration standard rate for the, for the applicable year and location.
Current standard.
I think, I think we're being.
He's going to watch that and then.
You're, you're registering for conferences, it's something that isn't even going to apply to. I mean, the last time this ever applied to anyone, so.
I was going to say, I think we're being, I think we're worrying about something that probably we don't need to. At, in the school business, you could never, never, never get your, get your room on your own. You always went through the school and through the office because there was a discount and, and they had the tax-free ability. Yeah.
Thank you, okay.
So I suppose on page 47, travel along the same lines. This is the standard reimbursement for meals at this time. However, if we just simply say at the standard, standard reimbursement rate.
Oh, I think.
I agree.
Do it once, do whatever.
I, I think for, it just seems for clarity, we should have a set number. You're upping it 50% already, which I think we should because even McDonald's has gotten more expensive than that, but you can't eat for 15 bucks.
Oh, yeah, you can. I mean, if it's dinner.
Well, that's.
If it's lunch or breakfast, you can't.
So it would be during working hours.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's good for lunch.
Thank you, Jeff.
I've seen a lot of those. I need a number on that one. Because I have people going to Lansing for the day. If I don't have a number, I can't approve it because I don't necessarily know what the number is or where the month is.
Right.
If they spend 21, but they only get 15, or next month they get 18, then I can't properly budget where I need to be.
Right, you need to be consistent with your union contracts. And actually, what this actually does is it's hard to win in contracts. What they get through the older version, what it does is it's solving a proceeding problem and taking everyone at 15 instead of solving time. So that's what you're doing.
I can go to a conference.
Make it 15.
15, sounds great.
Even if it's 15, I would get 10 and we'd even say you don't.
So if we just maintain it the same as what's been recommended, that's also common.
As long as it's lunch, that's what I'd want.
Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay. 5.06, which is on page 51, which is the next one in the packet. This was the one that I was referencing that I added the language with a 30 days at the end of the quarter if you're going to submit for reimbursement.
That seems reasonable to me.
Now, you want to think in terms of the travel policy, because if we're saying 10 days on the travel policy for vouchers, do we want this to say 10 also?
I think it should be consistent.
Yeah.
So we'll just change this to make it consistent with what we agreed.
Everybody set on this?
Yep.
You're going to change 30 days to 10 days?
No, it was, was either within 10 days or within the.
Quarter.
Quarter that it incurred. So that gives you 10 days of the way after the end of the quarter to submit your paperwork.
Getting it short? Do you like 30?
Yeah, I do.
Go back to the other one. That was, which one did we make?
They're both, they're both 30.
I can make that change. Well, go back to that one then.
So you just want it to be less than 30 or within 30?
I think so. I think the.
I think the language is in this one.
Within 30 days? Within thirty days?
Of the end of the quarter.
Then make, then make them both thirty.
Right.
Then they're the same.
All set for the next one then?
Yeah.
The new one, where you want to.
I just got paid medical leave is the next, is that not a low?
Yeah, let's do that one. Paid Medical Leave Act on page fifty-five. That is the new policy that's being presented. It is recommended by legal counsel because it is law. This policy doesn't necessarily apply to labor employees, but should we ever have someone that would apply to, we would need it there. Our personal day policy is sufficient to cover all the requirements of the Paid Medical Leave Act. But if we were to change our personal day policy, this would trump whatever change we made if we tried to lower it any more than what they are.
So currently, we have six personal days. I'm sorry, eight personal days. And previously, they started after nineteen, no, six months. Six months. And so the new requirement is, is that you have to be able to offer after a few days. So that's what this policy is just updating them to.
But this policy isn't about the package. This is about that who started higher and it's all that.
What, Michelle?
So we better read it.
Zero to nine. Yeah, I'm sorry, correct.
But legally required verbiage, right? So.
Get it now.
And we may have somebody, I mean, in the future.
We don't right now, but we could.
Definitely, yes.
All right.
I'd like to, I'd like to look at this for a second. Okay, so you don't, you haven't been here long enough for paid personal leave.
Yeah.
But you had, but it's a medical leave. So what if your daughter is in an accident? This doesn't apply?
No. This is federal though, or you said, right?
No, this is.
State?
State Michigan.
So this is if you require the medical leave.
This is for time paid. If you need time off, you don't have it. Whether you're eligible to be off would be subject to FMLA. What this does is it gives only one medical leave of the rate of one hour for every thirty-five hours worked for a maximum minimum to accrue of one hour per week. So they're not going to be fangy a lot here because I did bring my highlighted copy, but this only applies to the point where their personal days kids get. So they're not going to be able to accumulate very many days. If that's what your question is, but including a leave or something, there's FMLA rules that apply how many hours they've worked within a certain period. So this is just a stat we have for the sheriff's and from the government. Zero to ninety.
So you have to have twelve months in appointment for FMLA to kick in. So this wouldn't, you know, this is short-term scenario again.
We're going to handle employees, they'll leave all contracts, or a personal day immediately if they're fired.
So this is really.
So I'll watch the bill.
Are we okay with this one?
We'll be presenting this with the packet as a new proposed policy since it's required. So this will be one that if we would board in August, this would be one that would be coming to board the board as a new policy.
Thank you. Next.
Social workers? Oh, social media.
Wait, is there a reason we skipped over the media inquiry?
I'm sorry, that was my mistake, sorry.
It ran away to fifty-three.
Yeah.
Sorry.
This is the new policy. What this policy intention is to make sure that the voice of the county is being heard is the voice you want to be heard. This policy does not apply to elected officials. It is more for your non-union employees and your union employees. This is just as, hey, if, you know, the media calls and questions, we should be directing those media inquiries to someone who's authorized to speak on behalf of the county.
You're, are you saying that if somebody from a, from the enterprise calls somebody in an office, they can't talk to them?
If it is regarding county policy, county procedure, it should be that it's referred to the county administrator or to an elected official.
That's free speech.
And it's also the whole reason for the media in general. Like, I, this is not so well with me at all because that, I mean, they have their flaws and they're huge, but that's why they're there. And I think it's important that our, our employees understand and know that. And I do understand from a PR standpoint, why you would want to direct them to a specific place, but like also, it's also a game of checks and balances and being able to talk to the media, I think.
Then I would suggest if that's the intention, then we have some language where individuals are required to say something along the lines of, these are my personal comments, these do not reflect the policies or procedures in the county.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's good enough. But if it's a good reporter, they're going to talk to several people.
Well, there's that. There. All right, there are very few good reporters in the area. A media release could involve just a news release about an upcoming event. You don't mean that, right?
If it's a, if it's a press release.
Yeah.
That would, ninety-nine percent of the time, that's going to come from the administrator. I mean.
No, I'm talking about an event, like the senior services event.
They run that stuff by me.
Do they really?
Yeah. The newsletter and stuff like that, I mean.
That's not what I'm concerned about. I would be more concerned about like.
Media.
Well, no, 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 just like, like some sort of thing where a person felt it necessary to reach out to the media because it was a, a problem or, you know, an issue that they wanted to make the public aware of. I feel like that's within their right. Like, I don't think this is.
Let me share with you where I come from this. So I've been trained as a public information officer by FEMA. So if there's a crisis or there's a, God forbid, a bomb, a shooting, or whatever. You know, the context here is that we don't want misinformation going out. Sheriff and I have already had a conversation that, you know, we'll work in tandem. But if there is some crisis or some community emergency, we would work collaboratively in terms of sharing the message out there. So there's, what we're trying to accomplish here, the intent of this is not a gag order. This is to avoid risk for the county. So that's really the intent of this. So let's try to, you know.
It seems to me there are a couple of different kinds of messages. If we're sending out the message, and this is the county message, that's one thing. If the media is interested in talking to the registrar of deeds about something in her office, we'd expect her to take it. And if she called Trudy about a planning issue, I wouldn't expect Trudy to say, I can't talk to you about that, talk to the administrator. But if we're saying it's the policy of the county, this is, this is the official message of the county, then I think that ought to go through or at least be vetted by the administrator.
Yeah, likewise, I would say, Trudy, you can't, or senior services, you know, fine.
So if the finance officer is sitting in the audience at a board meeting and Zach comes up and has a question, I'd expect the finance officer to be able to answer that question and not say, I can't do that.
Right.
So I think, I think.
I think we have to trust people.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know that I support if you're unhappy with your boss, you call the media.
No, I don't, I'm not saying that, but there could be gross mistreatment or mishandlings that are happening within the county and then they wouldn't be able to communicate that. And I feel like that is wrong.
We have the whistleblower policy.
That's right, that's next.
Completely separate from the media wires. We have a media policy. Sheriff is our PIO, period. That means a lot of companies.
That's where I was going.
I don't want the media unless it's not here.
That's where I was going to go.
So, but it's different than, we're different than.
Whistleblower. Whistleblowing is you reaching out and starting, this is a media inquiry in, as a.
So is, if like, okay, let's, let's say the ticker, you're saying that it's an inquiry coming in?
Correct. That should go through the elected official, which it does in our office. Or in theory, if I'm not mistaken on, for senior services or inspect all department heads, not elected officials, their hierarchy is through that's office to you, is it not? I mean, their department head, they would report to them. That would actually ignore stead in your absence, so.
So each department head is actually their own information officer if it, if it pertains to their office, okay? Now, if it's a county issue, I mean, the last thing I'm going to do is tell an elected official that.
It doesn't, elected officials are different. This is just department heads and department heads technically under that.
Oh, yeah, the department's head would use it.
Because they all work for you, whereas our employees work for the sheriff, co-employer with you. Senior services works for, can I remember the new director? FEMA. But technically, FEMA's boss is Ebbell, who would use your representative, you're not sitting here. She is the board, you're not sitting here.
And I understand that, but if, if the enterprise wanted to know about housing permits, it would be fair for them to call Amber and Amber, we'd expect her to answer.
Without having to.
So it's, what kind of inquiry is it?
Well, I think it's like thinking through this on all levels because there's, I mean, there historically have been some serious drum-up within the county and I think, you know, I, I'm a believer in media and giving people a voice when they need it. And I don't want to at all stifle anyone or feel like they are being stifled because of this.
I also don't want to announce to employees.
No, I mean, and then.
You cannot speak to the media.
Boy, they'll love that, wouldn't they? I'd be pissed.
This doesn't say they can't speak to the media?
Yes, it does.
Because it's free, we have free speech wires, then they're not supposed to speak. We don't know what's going on, they're covered under the whistleblower.
It's a different policy.
It does say a little bit more than that.
Michelle, can I hear from you? Were you lifting your pen?
How I handle media mine is mostly your requests come to me. Obviously, I'm not going to see the administrator's approval to release whatever I choose to release. I have always in the past consulted with the administrator. The administrator has assured me this is not an attempt to be a gag order, but what I do and how today is a question that Commissioner Ross asked about, and I just could jump on it, the senior services newsletter. This seems to me that that has to be vetted for the administrator.
It has not. It has not to this point because we don't have a policy that speaks to it.
But if you're hiring department heads to do a job that is open to appeal, you trust them, you don't trust them. And I think that's where you need to, like Deb's always talking to the administrator about this, about policy. But if you hire these people to run their departments and be able to speak, like you referenced the administrator on solid waits on housing, she's on our internet, who, our, all of that. One would presume she would speak on that. That's just me, I'm also elected, I'm trying to handle those. My staff knows, they're always free to speak. But if you're quoting my office, I got elections, please know what you're talking about.
Right.
I don't know what you're talking about, but they're not going to be stopped, they're free to speak.
But Michelle, the first thing you said was, my staff all know that inquiries are supposed to come to you. And I will say, they'll say the paper's on, that is on the phone, they want to know about this and that.
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to give you, I want you to talk to Allison if it's about a court case. You want to talk about finances because people still, even though it's not under my purview, they're calling about finances and they come up and I will continue to answer those questions and give the best answers I can.
Is, is this a?
That would be the exact same mindset that, you know, I mean.
Has this been in, is.
This is new.
This is new. This is completely new. So there was no need for this prior to this, right? Because it's, it's like based off, I mean, Michelle, what I'm hearing from Michelle is it's relationship building. There was that trust among everyone. So I'm not sure that this would need to be in the handbook then. Like, that's a, it's an unwritten, you know, when you write it down, that, you're really limiting the voice of your employees.
Well, there are some things in here that need to be written down because there's references, it says if you're purporting to be Lillenocconey, you can't do that. So you can't have no policies regarding social media. You have to have some policies regarding social media because you can't, you can't, I can't have, like if someone worked for me and all of a sudden says I'm Advantage Electric and this is how I think about things. They've disheartened me because they're purporting to put forth a viewpoint that represents the entirety of the organization as opposed to my individual thing. So I think there's some things to work through here. One thing I think is really complicated, I just suggest, do other, is this something that other county establishments have?
It is, this was actually vetted by legal, so let's do this. This, as I said, this was drafted by corporate council, so it probably has that lens of corporate council protecting the county, which is what their responsibility is. So it's, like you said, maybe a little bit more direct. We can do a little bit more of a dive and look what other counties are offering and see if we have, you know, if there's other language. So that's what the intent of this meeting was, so let's not deliver die on this. Let's say we'll come back with some other language and give board some options.
What one other fine point I might make is the heading is regards to social media. There's been a lot of questions, yeah, I mean, so.
We're going to discuss social media though. This is the media policy.
Go.
That got a lot of social media questions too.
Yeah, and so, and so.
What are we on?
Page fifty-three. And so I hope that you will, in addition to looking at other options, also consider the option of, we didn't have it before and we were fine.
Melinda?
If it's by you, I'll take both that and the social media policy back to corporate and ask for a deeper dive into it.
Well, and they are going to, of course, they're going to say something like this, but it's.
I did call, I did call, I waited a lot, or a couple, couple of minutes ago.
I think we should have some discussion about social media so that you have an idea of where we're going to come from. But get back to this one, I would be comfortable with something like this that I think the inquiry should be directed to the department head, elected official, or the county administrator. I like that. Michelle knows her staff, yeah, okay, Allison, you handled this, you were up there in the court. And obviously, there has to be that trust that she knows Allison is going to say something outside of what's confidential. You've got to have that within your department. Same with the department head. I think employees should first take it to the department head. And if the department head then says, okay, no, you know, Gail, you go ahead and take that inquiry. I think we, I think we can give the department head that, that level of trust. And then, but they need to know also the confidentiality part of it when it comes to certain things.
I think what Deb brought up too, several times on the Almond Township Board, I made statements that was not running hand in hand with the sheriff's department. And what I clearly said was, this is my own opinion and it's not the policy of the sheriff's department. And that, Jim, you got to.
I'll be next.
Yeah. I mean, that was true. I mean, what I said didn't agree with what the sheriff, what I'm saying, as an elected official in Almond Township. These are my personal.
And what I was going to say, it does stress it in here, these are calls from any media. If the media calls, any employee should not be expressing their personal opinion while being paid by the county.
Right.
That is different than whistleblowers, we would on a county.
Right.
That's right.
In this, or bad behavior.
I, I understand that. I was approached by the enterprise last year and the reporter said, I can never find anybody in Lillenoc Township that will take my calls. And it's because the supervisor said, we're not going to respond to these. If somebody from the enterprise wants to know about home values, I want them to be able to call the equalization office and get an answer. And so we got to find a middle of the ground.
I really like what Commissioner Ross said.
Department heads.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just add department heads. And I also, you could also just add an advisory. If you receive a call, be sure and state the disclaimer. Don't tell them they can't talk. Say, this is my opinion and not the opinion of the county. And you could just issue that advisory instead of prohibiting.
I'd like the idea of the department head.
Yeah, that would, that would work.
Right.
I think there should be more of a boy with...
You got enough on us for now?
Yep. I went to the wrong...
Now we're at your social media, Doug.
I was trying to get this done, I was five ahead right now.
We still have 50 minutes.
So again, this policy is recommended by legal counsel, by corporate counsel. It's because there have been so many issues, again, social media, so we can, we can again use some of the same discussion points that we had previously.
I have no problem with the working time intended to be working time.
What I can tell you from experience in sheriff's office, we have had issues where by our policy, we could be held accountable for anything that you put out there. We have had employees disciplined for disparaging things that they have said on social media. It has, you have to, I mean, there is an image, whether it's the county or in the sheriff's office, that you can have, we get it's a prestige thing, we don't discourage it, but you also, as a condition of employment, you're not supposed to go into the bashing, who you work for?
Of course.
So when we have a social media policy, it's, no work, I mean, ours is more stringent. I mean, as background, we check all that stuff. If it's bad, we're probably not getting hired.
I'm assuming there's an exception if you're working on a, on a Facebook page for your office or your program.
Sure.
They have a Facebook page, emergency management.
Then it's an official function of the county and you're actually authorized.
That is our media outlet at this point. I mean, really, we don't take a lot of, we take calls where available. We control what goes out via Facebook. If it doesn't go out through Facebook, we're not actually putting any impact.
You know what, and I acknowledge all of that. You guys are, was I, military organization. It's different than, I mean, you've got to be extremely disciplined, very careful, you've got to be meticulous, and I admire that, and that's a life, a dedication that's amazing. And it's different than somebody who's just working in the county building.
To a certain extent, because when they're being paid by the county, they should act in accordance with the county. When they're off, when they're not working, then they're right and creating their own thing, but to be paying somebody to disparage the county, the county side is...
They're not supposed to be on that stuff during work anyway.
If you, if you read this, it really doesn't reference what you can do personally as a person. It pretty much references anything that we can construe as an official county communication. If you read through the whole thing, it's not telling you, you can't go on Facebook at three, at five o'clock at night or 10 o'clock at night and say, I don't like where I was. There's nothing in here that says that. It does say...
You've gotta be able to say, work sucked today.
Right. So, so this, this doesn't prohibit that.
To your friends.
Can we? We can.
This just, this just says that if I'm purporting to be Leland County...
Which is, one of the issues we had, one of the issues we had, part of the post was, they've recruited themselves and they've got...
Right, so that's, I think that's the only thing this policy really, you know, you, there's nothing in here that would stop me from, or put me in an employee spot. I could go on Facebook at, minute I walked out the door and say, this place is terrible, I don't like it. And there's nothing here that stops me from doing that. What it does stop me from doing is, I, I am the personnel director for Leland County, and I represent the policies of Leland County, and this is, you know, I, I can't do it in my official capacity without, that's all this says and I see, anyway. I read through it pretty carefully.
Yeah, you're not supposed to do that anyways.
Right.
Jamie, you've been biting your lip.
Um, no, I mean, if, I mean, Doug is probably correct. I also, I mean, I, we've all seen cringey things that people have put on the internet, right, where you're like, ah, you probably shouldn't say that, you still work there. But there are also sites like Reddit where you can anonymously post about something, but because we are a small organization, I mean, we're not that small, but you could probably pinpoint that employee and maybe, that's where, to me, it gets a little fuzzy. Like, if you are posting anonymously and maybe, you know, like, maybe it's a police officer's thread, and there's, you know, all chiming in about a specific policy or something around the country or around northern Michigan, where does that line, where is that line drawn, I guess, is what I would, because, I mean, we, we should be able to, I think, as people commiserate, like, on a, on a level where, you know, people don't know who we are, anonymous level, versus something else.
It's, I agree, our line is different than somebody working in the sheriff's office. But I can tell you, that's criminal activity happening in somebody's post, and we have bad convictions in this county based on somebody's post. Crime is gonna be committed there, and we don't want our employees, our officers, making threats, terrorists hit or whatever.
Oh, I didn't, I wouldn't even talk about that, but yes, threats are not okay. Yeah, okay.
But if you, if you, Jamie, what you're saying, if you are posting anonymously, then you are not representing yourself as Leland County, so this doesn't even apply to me.
No, but I'm saying if, like, a department head were to find that in, like, or it was brought to them, and, you know, you can extrapolate sometimes who is what.
I think it's important to keep a good workplace going.
It's not the person, it's the fact that you're purporting to be the county, that's the, you gotta really...
Yeah, that's a good thing, okay.
That's the thing, that's the, that's the...
But Doug, if you walk out of here at 5:00 and get in your car and post, work sucks, you're not gonna be the outstanding employee.
And he's gonna be the one to do it, let me tell you.
Apparently, apparently you guys haven't followed my Facebook page very much.
Devil la mode.
I'm not happy about this, that commissioner's job at all, and I've been telling a lot of people.
Anything else on social media?
So...
Yep.
You know, what about, what about if there's a post out there, and we're in, probably, I, I guess everybody would know about overheard in Leland County, it's a big one, and now you can post, I guess, anonymously on there, which is bizarre to me, but the first place I would think is that we've got cyber guys, they can figure out exactly which computer that came off of, and that's what they do over there, they can figure that out, so that would be the first thing I would think about. But, but if there's a post on there and, and somebody says, some, you know, sheriff's department absolutely sucks, and one of these deputies did this, or whatever, there are incomes where somebody would want to, that's where the conversation comes in, and that's, that's where they say they sit back and get popcorn, because it's when it gets good, because people are going to protect the sheriff's department and other people are gonna pile on, and that's how it goes. So at what point can an employee go on a post like that and defend the sheriff's department, or would that be a violation of this one?
Well, if somebody makes a post, they're not gonna look at it unless there's a reason to be there.
I mean, one of your employees is off, at home over the weekend and sees that.
They can post anything, as long as they're not representing themselves, employees of the sheriff. We, an anonymous post, somebody batches the heck out of the sheriff. Unless that batch was criminal and natured, or for some reason, we were holding those employees and part of an internal employee investigation, we're not gonna look at it.
So Bobby goes on and says, well, you're wrong, you know, you're wrong, the sheriff's department is really good, and then somebody else comes and says, well, Bobby, but you're one of the deputies. I don't know, so just, they have to determine their own.
This is why we have policies.
Yes.
Challenging, and, and there's always multiple ways of looking at it and approaching it, so this is what the intent is, is trying to, again, mitigate this, not to, Brian.
I got a question on our computers that the county gave me, so if I was to look up certain stuff that shouldn't be on the computer, what could happen and how would you get a hold of it?
Oh, rookie.
I guess, I, this is real, you go in the court and you pull out your phone and said this, and the defense attorney says, officer, let me see your phone, and your whole phone is open to evidence.
Well, Leanne knows everything you're doing with the computer.
And it's the same way these computers do, okay? I mean, what policy does that?
You agreed to that when you took that computer.
The information technology resources policy addresses the use of county, your county technology.
But under deposition, your own phone, though, if you use that, you could also be...
Well, you, we know as well as I do, the court, they issued orders to stop the invasion of someone's private cell phone. I've seen it done against elected officials, to try to limit their personal phone and their personal iPhones. I mean, court will step in and say, you're going for protection, just holding to my knowledge, and I have to go back to one elected official, it has accounting on his cell phone specifically.
Yes, and that's, yes.
And it's to avoid exactly what you're talking about, because you know that judges will watch those orders and see the judge.
But it's not, and you're right, but it's, it has to come from the judge, because on its face, you use your personal device or business, it is subject toable immediately. Now, the judge can limit that, but that's why we issue cell phones to all of our law enforcement.
Yeah, sorry, didn't animal.
But even us as, as elected officials under deposition, I think they can...
I've seen it tried and I've seen it watched.
Yeah, they usually are, but it's on its face without judging the benefit, it is foible immediately, personal advice.
But it remains a process.
Got enough on this?
I think so, I don't know that there's really any significant recommended change on this, I've heard pretty much everybody says they understand that this is...
It says be careful, is what it says.
And you're not supposed to use it during work anyways, so...
Yeah.
Right, just be careful, use your common sense.
The next page, page 59.
Don't be an idiot.
Is a new policy, recommended by corporate counsel, which is just basically your whistleblower's protection policy.
Whistleblower Hunter Biden won.
Any questions on this one?
Let us read it to discharge.
Right, it's just...
That's right. Ready to file.
Any concerns?
Nope.
This was crafted by the attorney? Yeah, all right. This one is gonna defend us, right?
And I'm gonna drag you on to page two. This is the, as has been referred to in the past, non-union personnel policy. My first change is to update this policy to...
So this is for all employees?
Specifically call it employee personnel policy manual. This is the basis of, this is the foundation of all of the policies that the employees will be.
Union and non-union.
The one main thing that you need to be aware of is that elected officials, obviously, are not bound by these policies. Similarly, it states in here that any union contract supersedes any language that is in this document.
Sure.
But that language needs to be here because you have several employees who are not in, if already unioned. So again, in this document, all of the copy that is black was prior, all the copy that is red, underlined, is recommendations from legal counsel. There are, because, because of the formatting, I did put comments on the side that say, like, this section was language from legal counsel.
Well, just because it's from legal counsel doesn't mean you have to do it.
No.
I mean, they're gonna, if you ask them for an opinion, they're gonna give you it.
And if you get a different lawyer, you're gonna get a different...
No, we like our lawyer.
Again, the intent is just to provide risk mitigation.
Anybody see anything there they wanna ask about or comment on?
Okay, so this whole page is red, so this is the kind of thing that I'd like to be able to take some time on. There's a lot of red here.
Yeah, I would, too.
So this stuff...
We're not approving anything today, we're talking about, anything here, for now, we wanna talk about?
I think so.
Why don't you go by paragraph by paragraph and tell us what it's about? We're gonna do that.
I think that's gonna be too much time. We only have a half hour left.
Well, we can say to, let us read it at home.
Actually, that would actually be a great recommendation, for you all to read through this document and then make notes, anything that you think needs to be, you know, vetted further or discussed further, or you have concern about, if you could forward that to myself, that way we can then get more clarity or find out.
Thank you.
So that would, that would actually really help expedite the process.
But let's talk...
Oh, I would definitely give it to you, so...
So, so a lot of, a lot of this is just like definitions, which, I, I don't think there, that's, that's too much.
When you get to the table of contents, you see that I put in the other policies in the table of contents and they're referenced in the document itself, the other policies, like the equal employment opportunity, so that when the employee comes to this manual and they see that, they'll be able to click on that, see, they'll open that other policy. So the ones we do, equal employment opportunity might not be a big one, but when they come to FMLA, FMLA is not spelled out in here, but they're gonna wanna know what it says, if that's something that they're...
So I got a couple of questions, and we go to page 14, you're changing, you're changing our, our vacation leave.
Do you wanna do that, or should we just go through each page so we can make sure that we get, I mean, not deep dive on each page, but if we jump to that, I'm not sure what we...
It should be done in order, whatever, start at the top, so we know where we're leaving off.
Let's just go quickly through.
All right.
So the first one, equal opportunity.
Where?
Page seven on your document, if we go past that.
Table of contents.
Oh, we already knew that.
Okay. Number two is employment general. This is a lot of definitions of what employment will be or is. It includes immigration law compliance, defined job postings, hiring processes. When you go on to the next page, types of positions are there. We have four defined types of positions in our policy as of what. We do not have some of the additional ones that are there. They were recommended to be put there because if we ever did want to consider having interns or volunteers, there should be something addressing that before we get to the point of, oh, we have volunteer, what do we do with them? Introduction period, layoff and recall on page six, that just spells out how it would be done for non-union employees, because all the court's bargaining agreements already address that.
Could, could, before we go on, could, I had a question on page eight. You, you listed the types of positions, do we not have, or have we not had in the past, contracted persons that are, they're not regular full-time, they're not grant positions, they're not temporary positions, but they're contracted for some amount of time?
We do, and, and yes, that should probably be addressed. Thank you. Great decisions, nobody told them.
Thank you.
Any other questions in that area? As I said, layoff, recall, those things weren't defined in our non-union policy, so I'm asking it to be put in this personnel policy, for those people who don't have funding or any bring us to spell it out. The next section, pay periods and overtime, that was existing, other than just that one minor change of employees' regular rate of pay, and that was a change made by, specifically made by corporate counsel. On page 11, you'll see a section on deductions from pay. This actually spells out what, as an employer, we're allowed to reduce someone's pay for. Doesn't happen often, but you may have a, a new employee who is salaried, who did work full pay period, they don't have vacation time, for that instance, you would be able to reduce their pay for this unpaid date. For that instance, you would be able to reduce their pay for the unpaid date.
Great. Yes, it does.
So that's new or revised?
That was never, that language was never included, so this is from legal. This is from legal. And the reason you would want it there is if you do end up having a circumstance where you have to reduce someone's pay, you don't want them to say, well, you couldn't do that, well, here's your policy, but it isn't here. The per diem policy and reassignment policy are linked at the bottom of page 11.
Can I ask a question on, I'm looking at deductions. What was that? Employer is not required to pay the full salary in the initial or terminal week of employment. What does that mean?
That means, oh, you have a director who leaves on a Tuesday, that's her last day of work. You don't have to pay them that whole salary for that pay period.
I think you should add if the work week is not complete or something.
I didn't hear you. Quinn?
I said, I think they should just say if a full work week was not completed. Because it kind of sounds like, well, you're leaving Tuesday, so we don't have to pay you this week. And you wouldn't do that, but. Or pay can be prorated for a partial week.
Prorated.
For time worked. Something like that.
In the first and final week.
Yep.
Just define it a little better.
Sure. Any other questions on that page?
Nope.
Page 12, that.
Wait a minute, four, for penalties imposed in good faith under infractions of safety rules. So all policies have been, that's a little loose. Penalties imposed in good faith for infraction of safety rules of major significance. What does that actually mean?
That suspension of a salary employee.
No.
Okay, it's actually addressed in number two, so I can, I can follow up on that one.
Do we, yeah, do we have any other policies that actually define penalties, financial penalties?
I don't.
What's that? Anything.
That's what we're saying.
Anything.
I, the only thing I can think of is, let's say.
What's that? Well, I was just wondering if, I mean, if this references a penalty deduction, it would seem like you'd, the only reason you'd have it there is if you have a penalty defined somewhere.
Right, right.
I mean, you can't, there are no financial penalties defined anywhere, you don't need it.
That probably came out of boilerplate at the airport, if you mess up your side of badge, you get a hundred dollars, 200, and then you get your side of badge pulled. So that's probably just boilerplate that was in the attorney's book. Yeah.
However, we just discussed the cybersecurity, the I T, and the issue is you don't do your training and you, you know, after a certain period of time, your computer is shut off and you, in essence, somebody would have to, you know, say, look, if you haven't done the training, you know, you need to do that on your time and get it done, and you're going home, so.
But that's not a penalty, that's, that's, you're telling them, that's, that's reduced work hours based on not performing the work. I mean, a penalty is going to be a defined thing, I didn't follow my safety rules a third time and I charged you a hundred dollars, that's a penalty.
Okay.
You're not going to tell me to do it on your own time.
It's a different item than a, so unless we have something of those, there's no need for that.
We may want to just take that one. If everyone wants to take that up, that's fine.
Upper, upper until you have something.
Yeah, it's kind of loosey-goosey.
Because in that situation, there could just be a disciplinary action such as suspension.
It should be.
Right, it doesn't, yeah, the loss of office doesn't even cover.
But you can't tell them to go do it on their own time.
Anyway, move it on.
So, yeah, this addresses, you know, that there are obvious things in here that, uh, legally is. Page 12, there was no changes. When we get to page 13, the first one, break, break time for nursing mothers. That is a thing we want, that is a legal requirement that must be in the policy. We are required by law to provide nursing mothers opportunity and space.
I'll start again, Jill.
Likewise, I don't remember two.
Do we have to have a lactation room?
We have to provide, it doesn't have to be necessarily a lactation room, it has to be a place where they're able to, um, do patients.
And we're, do we have that?
We, we have the employee, not break room, locker room downstairs that would be available.
Yeah, the locker room would be fine.
It doesn't lock, though.
I mean, that, yeah, but it's.
Mothers figure. I know, but it's not fun if you have to do it every day and this is your place of work. Like, I've had to, I've had to pump in a bathroom, and that's not where I should be.
Right, taking care of my.
Are there showers down there that have a curtain and a vent area, so?
You can lock, you can lock that. Except for the shower and toilet. Thinking, thinking, forward thinking, I think we should try to provide space for, for mothers because I think, I mean, we deserve that.
Have you been in the shower?
It's really nice. I don't want to sit in a shower.
No, it's a nice room.
There's a, no, guys, there's, um.
No, it's, you need to go down.
Okay, I'll go down and see it, but I think it would be, I think it's.
I thought we had to have quote unquote a room designated with this lock.
You could, I thought you had to have. You know what you could do is add a nice chair to that room.
There you go.
Because it's a nice space, you need to go look at it.
But the lock, I think, Melinda is right, is important.
It does actually have a key fanned lock, so not just anyone who walk in.
But someone with a key fanned, good.
No, and then the shower is locked too, you can lock yourself in the shower. Trust me, it's fine.
And that's why I.
I think we've, we've got that down, let's go, let's go on.
I'll ask Chad G P T, he'll tell me.
And so likewise with the lunch, we have had situations where people have taken advantage of this scenario, so while it has been advised by legal, it does make sense to have this in here.
Totally.
People are entitled to a lunch, we want them to take their lunch, we want them to take it during the prescribed time as part of their department, so that, you know, people will say, oh, I'm gonna work through lunch and I'm gonna leave an hour early. You know, that, that's not necessarily.
Best for county.
Public expects business hours.
If they make arrangements with their, with their supervisor and there's not a problem, you know what I mean? That's up to them to work that out, but, but we do think that it should, it's not up to the individual employee's decision, it should be something that is a departmental decision.
Okay, so their boss can decide and they can allow it.
Does this override legal contract?
One hour per lunch. It does not override legal contract, legal contract takes precedent.
There's nothing in our contracts that speaks to that. But law enforcement is also present, so we're not, air deal on four days.
Quarter, eight day schedule, your turn or twelve is happening in one hour.
Correct, so.
This would apply to.
Maybe you, you should, because it's not addressed in the contract.
Wouldn't that be a donut break?
I guarantee it would be wrong.
Aren't they supposed to have a 15-minute break every?
A 15-minute donut? There's no, there's no.
The bad old joke.
Legally, do you guys have, have a lunch or a break or?
Aren't you supposed to?
Well, if you're not covered under that part of the legal law, we are not here to give you lunch or breaks.
Unless it's a donut show.
Exactly.
Well, and that makes sense because at lunchtime, if something terrible is happening, you guys all have to be on deck in that main.
Building's on fire.
Right.
Sorry.
Hold on, I have a sandwich to eat.
There is exemptions, but it's not covered in any of the contracts, it's known. But it's not guaranteed, so it probably should be.
It doesn't mean that you can't have lunch, but there are two.
Of course.
So in the essence of time.
Moving on.
That's bank going.
When I'm trying to get rid of, get, get rid of, get through, kind of the phrase, get through some of the rest of this. So I think we're at page 14.
Yep.
So this is one that we have had some discussion about in terms of vacation leave. I think this is the one that Commissioner Lotner was bringing up and addressing. So I think the rationale for this is to try and make, address the vacation issue in the most not obtrusive way, but yet allows for us to be able to be competitive in the workplace. So what this recommendation is, is instead of regular time employees who would have completed 90 days, which we have now had to change by law when people are eligible for person, personal days, they have to be eligible for those personal days after 90. So they do get eight days personal days. So we're saying that who have completed their 90 days of continuous employment would then have vacations starting at, they get their personal days from 90, 90 days as well as the vacation days, so six days of vacation time, and then after a year, they would get 12 days. And then after that, it's the same schedule that we have had and maintained in the county for some time.
So after a year and one week, can you be gone for 18 days?
Yes, you could if you haven't used them.
So you can carry over.
You can carry over your personal days. And also vacation days up to a certain.
Is that a federal holiday?
You feel like this is a step in the right direction, I just.
They have to tell me 30 days and it's on the issue. To have that in there, 30, by a week, there's 200, 30 days, 210 hours, then a seven and a half hour report week. There's a continuing rate of hold after 30 days, 12 hours, but it's 30 days on vacation time, so maybe for every quarter. An employee that could, in essence, work for two, two years and a half, 30 days, maybe in the past. I, I don't think that works best when you do this, not take vacation time, but there is a mandate.
So that's vacation plus personal.
No, it's just vacation, first one's.
So I just want everyone to know, I mean, it was just a, right before the pandemic, I went to San Francisco to find a job and I, I mean, 30 days was normal, starting. So we've got a long ways to go. I mean, I think this is a step in the right direction, but, I mean, we're in, by no means the West Coast, but. There are companies, I mean, my husband started with almost a month of vacation time when he started his job.
You could have worked one week and taken 30 days vacation.
They have specific benchmarks, I don't know what they are, but there are specific benchmarks, but, yeah, you're, like, you're hired in with 30 days.
Well, we're not the West Coast.
No, we're not, but then I, the idea is the same.
Higher in, four weeks vacation, so more than a month off.
I don't know, I.
So that's, you know, that's in our community.
So I got a couple of questions.
And more, the more like tech companies, startup companies who have those ethos, practice those ethos, that's, that's where they're at, so. But, and those are also companies that we're competing with, so we have to think about that.
And we did look at our, our neighboring counties, and we are grossly subpar from what other, our surrounding communities are offering.
Yeah, but they don't live in Little Rock County where everybody in the world wants to live.
It's just vacation every day.
You can't, yeah, all right. You just have.
Melinda, you were trying to say something?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not quite ready to jump to, to six days after 90 days. I think that's a big jump from, from the one year, so, you know, I don't know if there's a compromise of after 180 days, a certain amount of days perhaps, or, just to jump right into vacation, we have never had to do that, but I wondered what this would do to our union contracts.
Every contract's gonna want this changed, because this is better than every contract currently have.
Right.
They, they get six days after one year.
Right. I do, so if we were gonna look at this, I think, I, we generally leg through contracts and then files for non-unions. So, you know, to change this now, I don't.
So that's just a reminder, when was this policy set? 1978?
I, but I look at, I look at the quality of employees, we still have, we're still bringing quality employees here because everything, everything is, a couple of reasons. Number one, we, everything's good, right? We're, we're in ranges of pay where our health benefits are out of this world, and we have personal days that can, or sick days that are not sick days, they're personal days, so they're allowed to take personal days without actually having to be sick. So, I mean, that is one of the changes we made since then for employees.
So I was able to do that 40 years ago on my job.
Yeah, why don't we even do that here?
I know, but I could.
Are we, we're having trouble right now if we post positions, getting applicants?
When you are looking at some of those higher management positions and you want that talent that has that experience and you say to them, well, after one year, you'll get 60 days of vacation, and they're leaving a job where they already had among law, it's very difficult for them to make.
So can you modify this language such that you have a different set of tiers for director level positions?
You have that in red there, page 15.
That was the justification for that.
Page 15.
Statement that was put on there that, which many of the counties have this in their policies, where the county administrator has the ability to negotiate. So I would say it either would be one or the other, either the board consider increasing the vacation time or allow for some flexibility for.
What was that you thought of?
I would support, I, I have no problem with increasing, or decreasing the time to 90 days
because I do believe that our policies are outdated on this and we do need to be competitive. This doesn't get as competitive, but it helps a little bit. So I, I don't think this is a big deal.
Melinda?
It may not be, I would just rather see us do this, as I said, during negotiations. I think that that would be, that that timeline is, is just super important. And, but I don't like the idea of negotiating, or having known that we would negotiate for, for the professional staff, which I'm guessing that's department heads is what we're thinking about that. Because I think it just, we start that, then it just starts, we're small enough, as somebody said, we're small enough here that if one department head's getting something the other isn't, we, we got some problems here because it just starts up.
I thought years ago, General Motors had a big issue with that, giving the higher up different than the, and there was a big lawsuit on the, on it. You can't really start dividing it up by number.
I would see no need for that if there was an acknowledgement that we need to increase the vacation times to allow us to be more competitive.
So budget, so budget wise, I mean, Melinda makes a good point in undershare people, I mean, you're just not raising these, you're, you're actually raising every union employee's amount of that as well.
Well, we're ready to negotiate.
Yep.
Well, so it's a year from now or two or whatever.
Undersecretary.
You call me first?
Yeah.
I can either comment right now or I can comment during public, but I am not commenting on this. What's this word, I can remember, it was in 1975, it says 12 and 18. It starts adding the 20 and 20 days per year. All of the rooms currently have to work one full year before they get their six days. After that, all of the, correct me if I'm wrong, or Garcia, anyone. After they get to one year, all the rooms except the non-union and teenagers begin to accrue their next year's leave on each paycheck. So they're working towards that 12 years as they move to their second year, their 12 days as they work to their third. The non-union and teenagers get their six days on their first anniversary, when it gets to their second, their banks are dumped into their 12. If you are, and, so, I have two different things here. And if you're going to go to 90 days, you need six days, and then one year and you hit 12, and this may be where the undertare is going to go. As an elected official, I would expect that letters of understanding will come through at exactly the same time that this is implemented because Little Rock County has a long standing history, whether we like it or not, or want to look at it, of treating all of our employees the same. That's why we have the accident health insurance we have, we don't create a bubble and comic of we're going to be part of the real world because we are insulated with the health insurance we have. No one gets what we get, we offer the same life insurance. We offer, we have two tiers, we do have two tiers for personal days, but some of our unions have had a pop, some of theirs, the health will lower, that came in under a different schedule. But everyone is moving as a group, our merge retirement, it moves as a group. If you're not going to change this and you're going to allow the administrator to negotiate vacation days for that high level of a person, as an elected official, I would expect that same authority too. Understanding, you're asking for problems, because who's gonna make the decision that's worthy to get that real bit more vacation? you're asking for problems because who's going to make the decision that's worthy to get that real bit more vacation time? It would never be intentional, I don't believe. You wouldn't want to do that, but I think what it's going to do is upset and pardon very bad delicate balance.
Thank you.
It's just one more thing to create an explosion, but I would expect letters of understanding, not awaiting until a new contract comes. I don't think it's right. It doesn't carry out. I'm not opposed to if you want to increase, get your call up that night, but it needs to go to everyone.
And that. Sorry. That's just all I have to say. And that is what, we've talked to other counties and HR policy, you know, entities that have given guidance on this. They have said that they have established letters of understanding with unions.
But absolutely.
I'm sorry.
Well, but, but look at, we already also have twelve, we did this math a while, a while back during, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you were called.
I, I agree with Claire on the equity thing. I think one thing that has been missed here is for some time, you get a job nowadays, starting with thirty days. Although I, I think it needs to build someone on the front end. You have somebody here fifteen years right now and they only get thirty days.
Yeah, that's awful.
I, from my personal opinion, but as my twenty five years, I've sat in that negotiating room with me for longer, several of the previous managers. And every two to three years, that is asked of unions and it's always, I mean, the twenty, twenty two started with unions. The twenty two is over. And I'll guarantee it's lower from counties. I know it is for a fact. It's not so much the starting as what you offer down the road. And one alternative I would say, which is similar to what Claire was saying, I mean, instead of the six days and ninety days, then you earn a day every two months, it wouldn't change. Instead of lumping it at the end, give them a little. The pro back end is far more important. Granted, I've been here a long time, so it would affect me, but twenty two days is low. And you have eight personal days, or at thirty over fifteen years, it's simple. I just, you get a job tomorrow with thirty days to start, that's where the problem is.
I just looked this up. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, in twenty nineteen, the average worker received ten days of paid vacation after one year of service. So that's the average American worker. Or we should at least be average.
Well, just, just to point out, the average American worker does not get the health insurance that we provide.
Oh, you know, we.
So you make a, I mean, the benefits are taken in the aggregate. I mean, nobody gets health insurance that we get.
Get the health insurance. We have twelve days vacation. We have person, we have sick days they use as personal days. We don't, they don't have to be sick. But we also, the other thing to keep in mind is that we've got pretty skeletal crews in a lot of our offices. And you think about the sheriff's department, if we were to go to that many vacation days on top of that many holidays, on top of that many personal days, I know weekends don't matter over there, but they, they may ever hear, that's months. We have those employees that are not here.
Well, it means you have to, it means you have to hire more employees.
Bingo. It's a concern. So, but we give benefits in other ways and.
So you cannot replace time off.
Can we, can we consider this under budget things and kick the vacation thing to budget because it has a huge budget impact, what you're just saying? I mean, if you're, I mean, if you're doing, not, not to say we won't do it or we'll do it, but I mean.
Kind of getting the whole overview, I think, would be really advantageous.
Because I don't know what that dollar thing is. Okay, every union employee comes in the next day and we did this. I have no idea what we're spending when I say that. Not that I'm opposed to it, but I, I just, we're only talking a couple of months to get the budget talks.
Well, it depends. For my operation, it costs you money. For over here, it doesn't. If an employee in the first office takes a vacation day, they don't backfill necessarily. I backfill with overtime. It costs me money. It costs, it costs dispatch money. It doesn't cost the clerk any money. You're not getting work through that vacation day. But you're being employee and overtime.
Well, there's, there's only one logical way to look at that. Yep, yep. If we could give thirty days vacation and it doesn't cost us any time, then we're having people don't work full time here. I mean.
You have to be really, really careful here when you're talking about this because you've got union contracts applied.
Right.
And to say you might not see the cost in the moment, you've got to remember you've got multiple employees because of union contracts. I'm not pointing to you.
No. I was just backing up a little bit.
We just don't give vacation days these person days, holidays, when that gets so, I'm not promoting myself.
Right.
These union contracts, there are several of them where they can sell their personal days. They can sell their amount of vacation days. And that makes a difference. So you might not see the cost, but there is a cost.
Right.
It's just how we look at the cost is different, but it's right. I mean, we might have to bring in vacation days, someone to fill a ship. We just have, I have no one to bring on to fill a ship. The work has to get done, so it means overtime, working the Saturday, it's work.
Right.
To pick up six stuffs down the road and get down here. So there was always a cost.
That, that's.
There's a personal cost to the employees because someone could set it right. I was at a point where I had major veteran staff that retired that were all getting six, seven, eight weeks off by the time you combine personal days, vacation, holidays. You're trying to stagger that. They do need time off. They need, they do need their time off, but.
Are we ready to move on for, for, for today? And, and I think this will be a long conversation.
Yes.
Yeah, we, it's probably going to damage.
It's part of it alone.
Yeah. So with that said, there's still quite a bit that needs to be addressed. And then there are also, you know, the issues of MERS that I believe came up that we should be addressing. So with that said, we, if the board doesn't want to continue today, which I understand is the goal to get done to at four, which we are there. I'd like to ask for the board's pleasure on how you want to go forward with the rest of this information.
Well, we have, what, twelve or so pages. Could, do, are we willing to stay for the first run through the next, this document?
Right now?
Yeah.
No.
I have daycare, I need to come back.
Could we, could we suggest that the remaining pages, that you individually review them and, and make your comments by email and that could be aggregated?
It might take some time.
Because I mean, some of us, I think, we're looking at, and, you know, we're not, we haven't studied enough to really. Yeah. And then, then maybe just do a, a one hour work session before another regular meeting and try and get through what we could based on having done our research prior to that.
And we've got a couple of policies we looked at where I think we reached consensus with a couple of things that we're ready on a piecemeal basis to bring those to, to the board for approval. The ones that were controversial, the ones that are required to have.
Yeah. IT one and maybe the medium.
The IT one, the equal opportunity one.
Yeah, those two are.
Right.
Reimbursement, I think, so the.
All of those should be knocked out.
Paid medical leave.
And with some lower.
So the media and social media, we'll hold those for a review, get some feedback on it.
Do you want to give us a date?
Vacation pay, because we didn't get, there's still.
That one, that will be on hold.
Yeah, that's.
So.
So you suggested a work session ahead of regular for August or no?
Well, we have a budget.
Well, it'd be like a six to seven before the August regular session and try and get comments in within a couple of weeks.
Now we have to react because we're looking at budget. Right, fourteenth and fifteenth, or fourteenth and sixteenth, which is the Monday and the Wednesday, could be, could be for budget. And then if we wanted to finalize this before the next regular meeting, that would be the fifteenth, that would be the Tuesday before the meeting.
I guess not.
Now, I like work sessions. I love meetings.
All right, we will send you some recommended dates and ask, and I'll, I'll get that email out to everyone.
We've got like.
Before we, before we adjourn, before we adjourn, we've, we've got a lot of, got a lot of meetings to get scheduled, so respond to Deb's email on the dates and get those in. And then I also would ask that, within the next week, you get the appraisal, administrator appraisal. We, we always did have to give some feedback to her. So if you haven't done that, please get that into me. I'm, I'm now ready to take public comment. Yes?
So one thing to, okay, as I've listened to this on benefits, just a quick real world example. We're going to lose a ring back in here in August. He's going to go to the police academy. He is going to be sponsored by Grand Paris County as an employee there. He will be paid to go to the police academy. He will be making more money in the police academy than a second year deputy we have on the road. Want to address our employment issues? It starts with the pay. It's not our benefits. It's the pay, the student promote. He will be making, when he finishes the academy, almost five dollars more an hour than we can offer here in the state. That's where the problem is.
Then when he needs medical, we'll steal him back and get him over here.
You can't argue with five dollars an hour.
You know, because then he can be.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any commissioner comment? I would, I would say we've been reminded several times that our benefit program doesn't buy groceries or pay houses. So we got to balance both and, and that's, that's a challenge.
You have to balance, but it takes one medical to make you realize that a person on county insurance would have been a whole age of a lot better than personal insurance. It takes one of that. Try two in one year.
Right. I.